Yes, it is. Good morning and welcome to the March 28, 2019 business meeting. And I'd ask the county administrator to please take the role.
Yes, Commissioner Staff Support today. Kathleen Rastetter, County Council. Mary Rathke, Clerk to the Board. The role, Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here, jumping around today, huh?
Yes. Trying to throw us a curve?
Keep us on our toes.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, first, I'd like to announce that the Board will now recess. Thanks for coming today. As the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority Board for the next item, and I'd like to introduce our Housing Authority Commissioner, Paul Reynolds. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
And with that, Mr. Schmidt, what's up?
Yes, so first, as a Housing Authority public hearing on the proposed 2019-2020 Housing Authority of Clackamas County annual plan, Jill Smith from Health, Housing and Human Services will lead this item.
And Jill, how long have you been in this position?
About a month and a half. Good morning, Chair Bernard and Commissioners. I welcome the opportunity to talk to you today about our annual plan that we're preparing for submission. An annual plan is required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development of all housing authorities, and the purpose is to signal potential shifts, changes in public housing, regulations and requirements, policies, the way that we are administering programs, as well as let HUD and the community and the residents know if we intend to make big changes such as utilize the rent assistance demonstration program or the Section 18 programs, which are tools to dispose of and reposition public housing. And if you take the time to review, which I hope you do, at least on a high level, our very large plan, unfortunately, you will see that we did signal that we intend to take all of those steps to reposition our public housing. It won't exactly happen this year. It will happen over time, so you'll see next year and the year after and probably for the several years that we will continue to signal that that's happening because there's a lot of land and a lot of units, and it's a slow, ongoing process. I wanted to do a very high-level overview of a few of the highlights of the plan for you before we open it up to a public hearing. The first thing I wanted to let you know is we did hold a meeting with all of our residents, referred to as the Resident Advisory Board. Those who attended had the opportunity to comment on changes and proposals, and all of those comments are enclosed in this. You can find that, I believe it's in a section towards the back on page 120. Additionally, we did receive comments from people in the community. One of those folks, Tom Cusacks, somebody I've known for many years, is going to be testifying today, and our responses to those comments are also enclosed within this packet. There is no action required of the Board today. However, there will be a request for you to approve the plan so that we can submit it to HUD. It is due to HUD no later than April 17th, so you'll see us before you again the 4th. Thank you. I just wanted to go over funding levels briefly with you, and again, briefly, just a few high-level things. The Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program, which we'll refer to as Housing Choice Voucher Program moving forward, has over 1,742 authorized vouchers, which is the equivalent of $13.9 million for housing assistance payments. All of those go straight into the community, to our landlords, and then about a million of that is for administration of the program. Unfortunately, it's not quite enough to cover costs. HUD did a study, and that amount that they're giving us is about 73% of what it actually costs to run the program, so that is always a challenge for us, just because it's a very heavily regulated program.
Where's the rest of the money come from?
We don't get it. We run it a deficit.
So it comes from the general fund or?
No, it comes from a little bit. Every year, the Housing Authority has taken a little bit of proceeds off of their properties that aren't public housing to support that program. That's something that we're going to look at making some administrative changes so that we can reduce some of the overhead costs. I'm going to touch on that in just a minute. While we're authorized to serve 1,742 households or families on the voucher program, right now, we're only able to house 1,600 because while HUD tells you, here's all your vouchers, go out and use them, they don't give you enough money to use them. And the main reason for that here is because our costs per unit have been rising so quickly. I do have good news on that front, though. I think it was about five years ago, the regional housing authorities in Washington, Clackamas, and Multnomah County did a study of rents, and they challenged HUD's fair market rents, and they won that. And we did that again. Once you do that, you have to commit to doing it again every three years, or those increased FMRs will revert. So we were forced to do that again, and we were successful. Increases were about 10%. HUD accepted those, and we anticipate receiving additional funding due to that increase in our rents. The reason that the FMRs that are published by HUD are always behind is they use the American Community Survey data to establish their rents, and that is three years old. So, you know, when you're in a rapidly rising rental market, three-year-old data kind of doesn't work.
Did you want to ask a question?
Yeah, on this topic, Jill, what happens if there's a flattening or perhaps maybe a trend downward on rents, and maybe we're fixed at a rate maybe in the process you just outlined that's actually above market hypothetically?
You're kidding, aren't you?
Well, I'm just saying, what if? You know, I mean, if the theory is to add more housing and everything, all the strategies are in place to bring the prices down, the prices do fall down. Are we mandated, or are we too slow to be able to bring that down? What happens? Is that just excess revenue, or does it incentivize the market to stay high?
That's a really good question, and it's a big balance in this program. You really do have to watch the market rents closely, and we do see indicators that they're softening. One of those indicators is that now we're seeing that 90% of our voucher holders, first time they get a voucher in their hand, are leasing up successfully. It used to be about, I think, 70 here. A few years ago, when I was working in Multnomah County, it was like 50% there, so things are getting better. Costs are rising. We often worry that we don't want payment standards to lead the market, and they make up about 10% of renters, so it's unlikely they will, but it is a constant worry, and you shouldn't set them too high across the entire county, as that can definitely happen. Another thing you need to understand is we have the ability to opt not, if things really started trending down, we don't have to do another survey in three years. We could let them revert back to HUD standard FMRs. We also have the authority and flexibility to set ours between 90 and 110% of the HUD FMR and of our new FMR. So if things started trending down, we could reduce them, up down to 90% of that. Does that help? Watching the market is really critical. Public housing, we have about 545 public housing units, generates 1.7 million in rents. 90% of those are from public housing funds. Most of the rents, we're mostly serving extremely low-income folks earning even 10% or less than area median income. And then we have a capital fund program, which is $1,300,000 a year to maintain our public housing portfolio, which I think you're all familiar with, and it continues to decline and has declined by 48% since 2001, which is the reason that we're in this difficult situation where we have to figure out how to move away from public housing into another kind of housing that can be sustained. I want to touch quickly on a few successes that I'm really excited about that the agency has experienced. We were just designated a high performer. The way you're designated a high performer is you're able to maintain the physical condition of public housing buildings, which is amazing. We have an amazing maintenance group. The administration of the Section 8 program is such that they're in compliance. They just had a HUD audit a few months ago. They did extremely well. It's a great group of folks, and they work really hard. The financial management and integrity of the agency is strong, and I do have a letter from HUD saying that. We were awarded 55 new VASH vouchers. This is good and bad. 55 new VASH vouchers. VASH is Veterans Administrative Supportive Housing. It's the coolest kind of voucher you could get. I wish they did it for more than veterans. It comes with services from the VA, wraparound services included from the VA, their medical placement services. They have things like security deposit assistance for these folks. In order for us to use a VASH voucher, we need the VA to refer someone to us and to provide them case management. So we have a total of 121 right now, and 60 of those are being used. So every month that they sit unused for the first year, they will fund you at what you've used the following year. That is the way HUD works. So this is a problem, and if we don't see some real uptick in success, I possibly could be reaching out to you guys for some help and putting pressure on the VA to get us more referrals for homeless veterans. We have a village full of them that we could give VASH vouchers. So I really think we have a lot of resources that could be better used for our veterans. I think I already, oh, there's one more really, really good thing. We were awarded 41 new mainstream vouchers, so we have 75 total, and mainstream vouchers are vouchers that are for people who are disabled. They're especially prioritized for folks who are coming out of hospitalization, and they are homeless. And we entered into a new system of distributing these, which aligns with permanent supportive housing. These are folks who really need services to be successful. So we have reached out to a whole bunch of our service provider agencies that deal with these folks already, and they have signed MOUs with the Housing Authority that they will provide services for these folks as a result of getting a preference to one of these vouchers for these high-needs people. They've all committed, including our own social services, to provide a year of ongoing deep services.
Paul had a question.
Another, going back to the VASH vouchers, knowing that we've got a list of veterans we know are homeless, and we're using a transition shelter for some of those, it seems to me that we ought to be, from our VSOs, we ought to be out there for the people on the list, the people in the shelter, and trying to get them to leverage that as soon as possible, right? All hands on deck, so to speak, to leverage that, so if we don't use them, we lose them. Is that really what you're saying? So I'm just wondering, how are we adequately staffed with VSOs to actually be aggressive, that aggressive?
It's not the VSOs that are authorized to do this. Per the VA and the HUD regulations for VASH, because there's money coming from both entities, there are specific VASH caseworkers that the VA hires. They have to do the case management. They have to identify them, get them ready, and refer them. The VSO has not taken part in that, as far as I know. That would be smart and efficient, and that's the type of recommendation that we should be making.
So are those people the VA, or are they with the state?
They're the VA. They're the VA, yep. And their caseworkers, they're slow to hire. It takes them about nine months to hire somebody, last I heard.
Well, it seems to me that they ought to be, that you should recognize, whoever's providing those VASH vouchers should recognize it's the VA itself that's not allowing us to leverage it. It's not us, so.
They know. This conversation unfortunately has been going on for many years.
Okay, thank you.
So we need to put more pressure on them and having the VSO.
We're happy to help do that.
Yeah, we get to apply pressure.
So let us know who we need to talk to.
I would appreciate it, and I will. Thank you.
We'll be in DC next week. Jim and I will be in DC next week.
Oh, please, please talk about this issue. I wanted to transition onto a really quick update. Anybody have questions?
Yeah, Jill, I do have a question. Karen Smith used to be the head of ODVA. She was a very good friend. I know he's doing business. Who's the new head of ODVA?
I don't know. I haven't met them yet.
So I'll just make sure, I'll be heading down to Salem. I'll make that a priority to make sure that we're going to be on top of this, and we'll see if we can get a meeting with the head pretty quickly here.
I know that in my past life, Senator Merkley and Wyden were very helpful.
Okay, thank you with that.
Very, very helpful. I wanted to move on to a quick development update. As I said before, we signaled in this plan that we intend to transition out of public housing by using Section 18 and RAD. Those are both different tools. Section 18, while more difficult process, is much more valuable. So we do intend to, other than the Manor, which was already approved for RAD and is approved for construction loan and is moving forward, we intend to go for a Section 18 on the other properties. That comes, every single unit comes with a tenant protection voucher if you go that route. It's worth a lot more to the Housing Authority and to the people we serve. So, quick update on the Manor. As I said, it was approved for a RAD transaction. It received 4% tax credits, lottery-backed bonds in the amount of 3.4 millions, a little bit of funding from the multifamily energy program. The projects moving forward, we're developing a scope of work right now for the details about what needs to be done, meeting with residents regularly, and we envision construction starting in January of 2020. That will ensure that that project is around and in great shape for another 60 years, providing deeply affordable rents, not through public housing, through project-based voucher RAD. So it's similar to a voucher program. It allows you to raise the rents. It allows you to keep the property up without this huge capital investment deficit that HUD continues to place on us. Pleasant Avenue, which is the turnkey development that NHA is developing for us for homeless veterans, another new resource. It'll be ready for a move-in they're anticipating in November of 2019. 100% project-based voucher, half of them are VASH. That is one strategy to use VASH because you've got these real high-needs people. Sometimes the higher-needs people really struggle in the market finding a place, so if you project-base it, you give them certainty that you can find them a place. Hillside Park, we're preparing for a Section 18 application, and we have great hopes that that will be successful. That would give a voucher to every single person at the park. They could choose to stay or go, and this property will be the initial focus of our intent to slowly transition away from public housing. The bond gives us great opportunity to invest in redeveloping that property with partners, not on our own, and to have it be a real, more diverse, multi-mixed income, mixed use, a little bit of commercial in there, some green space. Anybody have a question?
Well, actually, those vouchers are good anywhere in the United States, correct?
They are.
And I've gone to those meetings before, and some people actually have moved here and can't afford to leave, and these vouchers give them the opportunity to go anywhere in the United States, and some of them, I heard people say they were looking forward to going back to their families.
To go back home, yeah.
Yes.
So their safety net, that does happen regularly. So we're wrapping up the planning process there and moving into the next step, which would be getting the Section 18 application approved. And then we kind of envision a snowball effect, you know, eliminating maybe 10 units, building something substantial there that we can relocate folks into, and then move on to the next piece, but we'll be bringing you really in-depth updates on this. The Pet Core Development, the first building will be completed in November of 2019. Buildings two through six will be completed in the summer of 2020, so that's very exciting. We're actually starting to see housing that will be opening. The Metro Housing Bond will be having a large event here, May 7th. We're going to invite developers, jurisdictional partners, talk about housing need, touch a little bit on information on our new housing needs assessment, talk about the bond, how to access the bond, and do a little bit of community outreach and engagement with them so that they can help set priorities that will be in our implementation plan, and I hope that you guys can be there. We anticipate our implementation strategy and the IGA will be approved by you. It's been pushed back a bit, June, July, and that we'll have access to funding and be open for business mid-August. That's the new timeline. And again, we'll be coming to you to give you an update, probably in May. These other areas that I was going to touch on are really basic policies that impact the way that we administer our programs. I don't think that there are things, if you really want to understand these changes and go deep, it is all in here. They were all discussed with the, you know, the residents. They were both Section 8 voucher holders and public housing. Their comments are in here. We didn't get pushed back. Most of our comments were about anxiety because of moves that are coming, so we need to continue to reassure people. This plan is, will be our third year of a five-year plan commitment, and then two more years we'll be doing the five-year plan again, which is a larger, deeper process. Does anybody have any questions?
I want to say one thing, Paul, notice that the day you invite those developers, we have a board retreat.
Oh, you do?
So it should be nice if we could try to coordinate that. Even a board retreat is very challenging, too. It's probably just as challenging for you to get these folks here, but that is of concern.
I think we.
I also want to comment, it's pretty obvious that you didn't just start this job. I mean, you started this job, but you've been in this business a while. Can you tell us a little bit about your background?
Too bad. I started doing this kind of work by accident when I was a young mom. Housing was something that I could do part-time, take care of my little ones, and I was working for a for-profit owner and running a lot of his big projects. He's a multimillionaire. Actually, having worked for him and other landlords has really helped me at this work to understand everybody's perspective. He owned one property that was Section 8 new construction. Sent me off to training, and I came back and started doing this work. I'd never even really known what subsidized housing was before that. I also ran a tax credit property for him for many years, and then I went to work for a small housing authority in Utah called West Valley City Housing Authority, moved into a bigger housing authority there, Salt Lake City Housing Authority, and was running, I was acting in a high-level management position then, and then Home Forward actually recruited me to come here and run all of their rent assistance and self-sufficiency programs, and then I was promoted to be the chief operating officer there. And then I left to come here to be the deputy director. So I've been doing this 25, 30 years. I'm old.
You were obviously a teenager.
Long time.
All right, Ken.
I have a few questions from the report. Under Attachment A, page 7, you remove the elderly, disabled singles over all other singles so that it's strictly served based on time, date, and date of application. Why did you remove that as a priority?
You know, I asked the same question because this was done before I started, and I guess that what's happened is there's been a trend where a lot of, there's a tremendous amount of our population that's in need, that are people that haven't been designated by Social Security as disabled, but they really are, and they're in the process of applying, and they continue to be skipped over and have been skipped over on our lists for a decade, and they just sit there and remain there. Sometimes they'll be successful and receive their disability during that timeframe, but it takes years often. So it's kind, and it's also a missing group that's not addressed by our homeless programs. If you are single, you're not disabled, you're not chronically homeless, there's nothing for you. So I think staff was trying to be responsive to that.
Okay. On page 42, this is just a language issue. It says, "Finally, PHAs need to sort out whether and how to make common areas or unoccupied units to provide supportive services." I think you mean available to provide supportive services.
Yes, we do mean that. Thank you for pointing that out.
And, let's see, I've got a couple more here. FSS activities and support services description on page 55, it talks about who the partners are on some of the services that you're providing. How are those services paid for?
That's a great question, and I'm really glad you brought that up. FSS is one of my favorite programs. I actually ran it once many years ago. It is paid for by HUD. The staff is 100%. It's a grant-funded position, and the neatest part of the program, as we engage with these folks who really should be work-focused families, who want to, they set goals with them, they measure the goals, they work with them regularly, lots of referrals. There is an escrow or a savings component, and that actually comes out of the funding that comes through the Section 8 pool of rent assistance. And so wherever they started into the program, say they started out working minimum wage and their rent was $100 a month. If by the end of five years, it's a five-year program, they are doing really well, and they've substantially increased their wage, and their rent is now $700 a month, which is pretty common, that difference between where they started and their contribution and where they ended goes into an account for them every month. And if they complete their goals, which includes getting off all welfare and food stamps and assistance, and completed their goals, they then earn that escrow and they receive that check at the end of the program.
Let's see.
You missed a comma on page 136.
We need him.
I got a couple.
So there's still time, there's still time to make edits to this, correct?
Yes, yes. This is, we will take your comments and your edits and bring it back to you for approval on the 4th, I believe.
So what happens on page 63, it says, "Per the alternative requirements listed in the Federal Register Notice dated December 29, 2014, PHAs are no longer permitted to terminate HCV assistance to a family due to the family's failure to meet its obligations under the contract of participation." So if you can't terminate them for failure to do what they're supposed to do, what can you do?
Okay, so for the FSS, so this is talking about the Family Self-Sufficiency Program, and that is referring to the fact that they're really getting two things. They're getting housing subsidy, and then they're getting the perk of the FSS program. If they choose not to engage in the FSS activities, they can be removed from that program, but you can't terminate their housing assistance because it's a voluntary program.
Okay.
It's not mandatory.
So the key word is it's a voluntary program, so they're not, it's, okay, I've got it.
Yeah, it's not mandated.
And then the last one I have for the moment is on page 67, Transitional Supportive Service Assistance. The first sentence in that paragraph says, "Even after a family's completed the contract of participation, a PHA may continue to offer appropriate FSS supportive services to a former FSS family whose head of family is employed." But then below that, it says, "The PHA will not..." But then below that, it says, "The PHA will not continue to offer supportive services to a former FSS family who has completed its contract of participation and whose head of family is employed." So which is it? It just didn't make sense to me. They seem to be contradictory.
Oh, I agree with you. I need to check on why that is stating that way, because I agree with you, it does seem in conflict.
No hurry, when you get a chance to get back to me, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. And I, yeah, that's all I have at this point. Thank you.
Amazing. Let's see, Paul?
Yeah, I just want to just say, I think maybe with all the, as I have quite a few questions as well, but it seems to be more appropriate at this point, maybe, that we do it in either a work session or a one-on-one to go over these details. But I think Commissioner Humberson is raising good points and, but I know it's more of a presentation and we have the opportunity, so maybe we should schedule a work session if there's a lot of questions, make best use of staff time.
Jill, what is your deadline to submitting this?
The 16th.
April 16? No later than April 16?
Yep.
I'm comfortable with finishing the reading on this and I can call you on the phone and ask you for the rest of my questions. It's fine with me. If we don't have the time to schedule a meeting, that's fine.
There could, there could be a policy session next Tuesday and then bring it to the business meeting the following week, extend it one week, but that really cuts close to your deadline.
I'm out of town for the next two weeks and I really want to be the one that talks to the commissioners about this, so.
We'll call you.
Thank you, thank you for answering the questions. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sonya.
Yeah, I'm just curious if you could let us know what the overall waitlist is at this point for the different services. I know that we have a coordinated entry system. There's no wrong door in getting through to our service system, but when people call and there isn't a service, they go, they may go on a list if they qualify. I'm just curious what those numbers are. I know that they're changing.
They're really, still very high. And I want to clarify that the Coordinated Housing Access, the CHA, is totally separate from the Housing Authority waiting list. It's something I think that we should work on changing. And in my new role, you know, where I'm overseeing all housing and services across the department, not just the Housing Authority, that's one of my priorities. It actually came up last night at our task force meeting. So the Housing Authority waiting list is still several years long. They have several, there's like 30 different lists. And I'm still learning about each one and how they work, because each Housing Authority runs things a little bit differently. Every list has a wait of several years. I think the voucher one has about 3,500 families on it. They opened it for two weeks, they had over 7,000 applicants, and they did a random lottery and the lucky 3,500 got to be on the list. So turned-
They just got them on the list.
I got them on the list to wait for five, five or five years or whatever. So I think that we might consider in the future being a little bit more strategic and looking at need and trying to figure out preferences and priorities in alignment with that, not just so randomized.
Do all of those 7,000 that applied qualify? Or do we not do a screening?
They say they do. You don't screen them until they come to the top of the list.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any more to present?
No.
All right. With that, we will open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. And I have one card, Tom Cusack. Good morning. So just give us your name. We know it's Tom. And approximately where you live.
Sure. My name is Tom Cusack. I live in Lake Oswego, have lived there for 38 years. I was listening to Jill's recounting of her experience starting out in Salt Lake City and was reminded that I started my HUD experience 65 years ago when my family moved into a public housing project in Detroit. And so I lived in a public housing project for about nine years. The project was huge, it was 2,000 units. And I was very fortunate to be able to get into the Army and leverage that experience later on to go to college and to start my HUD career in Detroit in 1973. And that's a critical year because that's the year before the voucher program started. And so I was very fortunate to work in Detroit and DC, Cincinnati, and in Portland for a long period of time. I was the Housing Development Director during the 1980s when Clackamas County picked up 144 scattered-site public housing units. And so I've been around for quite a long time and have lived in Lake Oswego for that entire period of time. One of the interesting things when you start digging, digging below the surface is starting to understand better where the vouchers are actually being used in the county. And the reality is, for many, many years, Lake Oswego, which was the largest city in the county, has really not used the voucher program, which is by far the biggest HUD program in the state of Oregon. And there's probably lots of good reasons for it. One of the reasons is that the payment standards that are used typically have been used throughout the metropolitan area. You know, HUD publishes this fair market rent that's supposed to be a rent that's used throughout all the counties and metropolitan area. And the Housing Authorities, of course, adopt payment standards that try to make sure that the people living in a particular county or a particular area are able to find units at that price. And one of the problems is, of course, the rents in Lake Oswego tend to be higher than they are in other parts of the county. And as a result of that, HUD has created a new program, basically, which is called a Small Area Rent Program, which comes up with rents at the ZIP code level. And at the ZIP code level, if you look carefully at 97034, which is one of the two ZIP codes in Lake Oswego, the rents that HUD publishes are 37% higher than the metro-wide fair market rent. And at 97035, the other ZIP code in Lake Oswego, they're 20% higher. And so if you have a family who is lucky enough to get a voucher, the reality is being able to use that voucher in Lake Oswego has been very, very limited in the past. There was a meeting last December that was as a result of some state legislation that required the cities that had significantly severe rent-burdened households to hold these community meetings. And at that meeting, there was a discussion about the mayor and the city council sitting, sending a letter forward. And so there's a letter that's been sent forward to the commission and to the Housing Authority, basically asking for the adoption of rents that are higher so that families are able to use those, use the voucher program in Lake Oswego. I think that's particularly important moving forward because, as Jill had mentioned, there's 544 units where people probably are going to get vouchers at some point to be able to use. And it would be a shame if they can only use them in some part of the county and aren't able to use them. And that's particularly important because many of the public housing units are three and four bedroom units. And families who are looking for places to live throughout the county, I think, should have an opportunity to look in Lake Oswego to use their voucher if they're fortunate to get it.
Yeah. Paul? Well, actually, thank you. Kind of fortuitous that you actually brought this. Commissioner Schrader and I were speaking yesterday about this very issue, about really you've got, to some degree, Goal 10. And Goal 10, State Planning Goal, requires the cities to have a, an assessment, housing assessment. And ideally, with all these, this housing bond that passed, we can actually, in an ideal situation, that every city has some accommodation for use of these dollars and affordable housing units so that they can actually leverage those. Because sometimes the workers that work in those cities can, you know, have a job there, but they can't afford to live there. So it exacerbates transportation and so forth. So it's ideal, would be ideal if there was some accommodation for actually placing or leveraging some of these new units in, around the county and the cities, as really the design of the state really on this topic is really all about. But we don't seem to be having a lot of buy-in historically. And I'm kind of excited because the new city council seems to be more inclined to be looking at that, and that's, that's great news. But we have a long way to go yet.
I was going to add, I was going to make a very similar comment at, you know, first, I don't think the state enforces Goal 10 as much as they should. As a matter of fact, when we were looking at a Happy Valley design plan, there was nothing that talked about affordable housing. There, lots of people think affordable housing is a townhouse, an apartment. Well, that's not true. But we are doing something very unusual. First county in the state, we're doing a countywide housing needs assessment. We are paying for it. We got a grant to do it. So with that, we're working with the cities and we're going to try to come up with a solution to this problem. And that might be not only cities setting aside land, but an opportunity for us to buy land at a better rate. But like Paul said, government camp, those people, some of those people are living in the woods or driving to Gresham or anywhere in the state. I mean, all over the place because there's no workforce housing up there either. And some yahots, I always, my brother lives near yahots, 70% of the employees there don't have housing. So some of the owners of businesses are buying old hotels and fixing them up so their staff can live near work. So it's a big problem. And hopefully, the housing needs assessment will get us closer. Martha?
Yeah, I want to thank you for that. I just wanted to mention that Councilor Christine Lewis, who's our Metro Counselor, is in the audience and I'm welcome her today. And actually, one of the conversations we were going to have quickly after this meeting was, we haven't talked about it yet, but I did want to mention to her Goal 10. Where are we with that, with Metro? As we look at corridor redevelopments, how does that fit in? And also, just a comment about Lake Oswego. I live in Evergreen. I have a close friend that lives in First Edition. And I know where some of the potential affordable apartments are, but I am also aware that even in my neighborhood, the rents are getting so high that they really can't be, as you mentioned, compared to the rest of the inventory, considered affordable in the same way anymore. And it's a large concern for the city. And I'll be, I'm meeting with Councilor Teresa Loft tomorrow and that was one of the things we were going to talk about as well. So I think there's a lot of movement on that. And to Jim's point, in terms of what's going along statewide, the Association of Oregon Counties has gotten a bill passed in Salem, passed unanimously out of the House Committee that will actually give OC Oregon Housing Resources to embed housing specialists in every region of the state of Oregon. So the needs of various counties and regions can be tailored to what, you know, what their needs are, what the costs are. And that was a big push uphill, but I'm very proud that we were able to pull that together. So I think we're working on it on multiple levels. So thank you for coming today. And oh, and by the way, I also have a friend who has an apartment there. And I've been meaning to talk to Jill and her folks because she's getting priced out of her apartment. She does not want to leave Lake Oswego. And so part of the, what she said to me was, well, they want me to move to Camby, but my home is in Lake Oswego. So those are the kinds of issues that, like, even personally, we're dealing with.
If I could just echo what Commissioner Savis has said previously, and that is, I've lived in Lake Oswego for 38 years and I have to say that the movement by the mayor and the council to send this letter forward, asking for the higher rents, and also to offer to hold a meeting with landlords to help promote the voucher program, if that's appropriate, that's something that's pretty unprecedented in the experience that I've had over the years in Lake Oswego.
Ken?
Yeah, I was just going to ask Gary and Jill, in the future, when you have a report that is this large and this detailed, could we get it the weekend before the meeting instead of the day before the meeting? It would be helpful, because I was unable to complete it with all the other reading that we had. So I only got halfway through. If we could have it the weekend before on reports that are these detailed, it would be helpful.
So you should have gotten it last Thursday with all your other materials.
I didn't get it till yesterday.
All right. We'll find out what happened there.
Maybe that, there may have been another mistake then, but I didn't get it till yesterday, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, you would have caught that comma had you seen it.
Absolutely.
Well, oh, I have one more. Thank you very much. Eric Olson. And just as he's coming up, we're going to have to speed through this a little faster because we need to be in Salem today to testify on a issue. So thank you, Eric.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Eric Olson, Senior Planner at the City of Lake Oswego. I'm here to provide comment on the Clackamas County Housing Authority's draft one-year action plan on behalf of the Planning Department at the City of Lake Oswego. In February of this year, as was just discussed, the Clackamas County Housing Authority received letters from the city's planning department and Mayor Kent Studabaker requesting that maximum HUD small-area rents be adopted for Lake Oswego ZIP codes 97034 and 97035. The request was made due to the clear locational imbalance in the use of housing vouchers within Clackamas County. The use of HUD housing vouchers in Lake Oswego occurs at less than one-sixth of the rate of the rest of the county. If the Lake Oswego rate simply matched the rate for the rest of the county, 39 vouchers per 1,000 renter households, the number of vouchers in Lake Oswego would increase from 25 to 195. So usually, using actual market rents for voucher payment standard maximums would make it possible for voucher families to include Lake Oswego in their housing search. Greater use of the housing vouchers in Lake Oswego would also address severe renter housing cost burdens, address housing needs in our comprehensive plan, and allow people to live closer to where they work, thereby reducing transportation costs, congestion, and vehicle emissions. We note that in your annual plan, the redevelopment of your remaining public housing inventory will require at least temporary tenant relocation with housing vouchers. Without revision to voucher rent limits in Lake Oswego, these tenants will not be able to include Lake Oswego in their search. Unfortunately, we have already received a response from the Housing Authority that the current funding levels will not allow payment standards to be increased in order to accommodate maximum HUD areas, small-area rents in Lake Oswego. It's worth pointing out, however, that the Housing Authority expressed a commitment to monitoring the rental market in Lake Oswego, as well as a willingness to increase payment standards when funding levels and market rent levels will allow it. We are eager to continue working with the Housing Authority on this and other issues related to affordable housing, and strongly urge that the county consider, or continue to consider, rather, adopting maximum HUD small-area rents in the ZIP codes in Lake Oswego when feasible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And, you know, for years, we talked about sharing, some people may call it a burden of affordable housing, which I don't agree with, but Milwaukee, Oregon City have taken on a lot of that. But the rest of, now Estacada, Malala, and some of those rural communities are, but Happy Valley, Lake Oswego, Westland, it's hard to get a development going there. But, you know, with this housing bond that we got from Metro or getting from Metro, hopefully we can get ahead of some of the increased costs of land and do some development that might provide greater opportunity. And that's Martha.
No, no, no. It's Paul.
Oh, did you?
We've got.
Oh, you reached.
So thank you for your comments and I'm learning today. There's a number of ways to tackle this challenge we have before us. And so my question to you is that, is there any discussion with the council about maybe a particular, or citing any particular mixed-income housing that we could be a part of to leverage this metro bond that the chair just raised?
Those discussions are beginning currently and we're hoping to advance them in the coming months.
And again, I'm hoping ideally that, as I mentioned earlier, that all the cities in the county and the urban part that are eligible for these dollars, take a hard look at this, Westland, Happy Valley, all of those, take a, look at the opportunity for leveraging these dollars. I think it's really important that we realize that if we're going to cut down our, or that the cost for any worker, a low-income worker, their commute costs are high and it's taxing our system. And if they are able to live near, close to where they work, that would be ideal. So I'll leave it there.
Sonya?
Yeah, so I appreciate that in this plan are the letters from Lake Oswego asking to use the higher form of, so I'm just curious, Jill, what is the process in order to achieve this? Like, how long will it take? What do we have to do? Is there anything that we as a commission can do to encourage HUD to allow us to do this?
Yeah, very good question. Thank you for asking that. We did just successfully complete that FMR study. We're waiting to see how much additional funding we'll get from HUD as a result of that. Right now, we are authorized to serve 1,742 families and can only afford to serve 1,600. They just don't even give us enough money to do what we're authorized to do. When I was running the programs for Home Forward, I actually made a pretty dramatic change and created seven different standards depending on real rents across Multnomah County. What that does is it lowers rents in some areas and it raises them in some areas. So it's very controversial. I am totally open to doing that. It's the transition that happens slowly, but I do believe that people should have the opportunity to live in neighborhoods that they choose. So if this money helps us, we can, we can look at taking those steps.
Well, I'd like to move to Waverly. Can you raise the rents that high? I mean, I don't know that that's really right either. I mean, so I'd love to live in Lake Oswego, but I can't afford to live in Lake Oswego. Doesn't make sense that I could pick my neighborhood and that, you only got so much money. So that means somebody's not going to live.
You're right.
I don't, I don't know. I think you have to jump ahead, you've got to buy land, develop, and develop the project. And cities should participate in the purchase of that land. You know, we're looking at Camby, we're looking at that, that one spot where there's an acre. We could get that acre and develop housing on it, but at the same time, the city should participate in reducing the cost of that project so we could get it done. Maybe that's SDCs, maybe it's getting sewer lines, or roads, or stuff like that. This has been a great discussion, by the way. Okay, so we need to move on. So, thank you very much, and I'm going to close the public hearing and announce that the board, that there will be no board action on this item today. This item will come back to the board for action on April 4th, 2019 Business Meeting. Thank you, Jill. Next, we still have a Housing Authority Consent Agenda, and I'll ask the clerk to read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda by title.
Okay, the Housing Authority Consent Agenda in the matter of writing off uncollectible accounts for the third quarter of fiscal year 2018-2019.
Do any Commissioners want to remove an item from this extremely long consent agenda? See, not all entertain a motion.
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Paul. Hope you enjoyed this discussion too.
Yes, I did. It was very informative. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to citizen communication. I'd like to remind people that we do need to head to Salem, so please keep your comments short as possible, and we only have one card, so, Brainerd Bauer. Brewer.
Chair, would you announce that we're reconvening as the Board of Commissioners?
Oh, yes. And at this point, we are adjourning as Housing Authority and reconvene as Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting, and thank you County Administrator for the reminder.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
Good morning. Thanks again for allowing someone like myself to come and testify. I appreciate you listening. I realize you've got a lot on your agenda. I'll make it really, try to make it really brief. One thing I wanted to say is there's ongoing discussion about Redland, it's about traffic safety. If I didn't say my name is Brainerd Bauer, as Commissioner Bernard said, I'm from Oregon City. And I've provided you a detailed analysis of the road safety reports and all the things we've been doing. Also, want to thank that we've made progress, there's no question, and I hope that there's progress on the radar feedback, which I think, I think consensus is growing that there's no negatives to it. There's only a question about maintenance, maintenance on that approach. Redland is unique. It's, I think, if you look at the analysis I've done and others have been doing, ours unique downhill stretch into our school and commercial zone lends itself to that radar feedback approach. And I, I hope we're making progress in that direction. I came today, and that's really, I left a photograph of, of something, because one of the things on the details that I've been providing has been some other areas, and Ferguson and Redland Road is one of those. And the photo that you see is two pictures I took where I'm stopping at the white line that you're supposed to stop and looking east and west. And there's a stump that was there, that's still there. And I've talked to Randy Harmon from Maintenance. Maintenance has done an extraordinary job in the last years to do shoulder maintenance, and I think some of our most serious accidents were clearly from that, and I think that's made a big improvement. I've talked to Randy Harmon about this stump. It's actually cut off pretty high. Apparently, and this is the question I have for you, and kind of maybe there's a way you can influence the picture moving forward, that stump has remained there because in part, it's, it's in the county right-of-way, but Maintenance can't really take something like that out unless they have some permission from the property owner, which surprised me too. There was, and I don't really understand that in scope, but perhaps there's something you can do to help when there's something that, and if you look at these photos, it's pretty obvious, like this contributes to traffic safety. There's no question. You know, to help the Maintenance Bureau to be able to take action more easily, so that's my request and bring it to your attention. So, thank you.
I didn't know, but yesterday, we don't own that right-of-way. The property owner owns the right-of-way, and, and that's just an easement. Right-of-way is an easement. I never knew that until yesterday.
Me either.
I think it was Monday, Tuesday.
I was like, really?
Yeah. Anyway, I think Ken was first, and then Paul.
Well, it was rather fortuitous that you bought a picture of Ferguson and Redland Road, because yesterday I was out doing a public service filming about where some of our VIRF money will be spent, and that was one of the intersections where we want to put in a left turn lane that'll make it a lot safer for people turning onto Ferguson from Redland Road. Our Transportation Department staff are here in the, in the audience today. I'll make sure they get this picture, and we'll see what can be done, but I just thought it was interesting, they have the picture. They just showed it to me. So, we'll see what can be done on that. Thank you.
And all I add, I think that intersection is hidden for people who don't know the area. So when somebody gets routed with Google and other things, it's just hidden, and that's part of the, the topic. So I, you know, maybe a left turn lane helps, but I would encourage allowing Maintenance to do more marking of the intersection. I would encourage two things. One is the, the stop line, as you see where I'm stopped, to move it closer to the road, because as we add these bike lanes and stuff, those white lines where you're supposed to stop are pulled away from the road. And even along the roadway, can we step out of the box and do some additional diagonal striping, or some way to give people an idea that, hey, there's an intersection coming up, which I think is probably the big contributor.
All right, we need to move along. Paul.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just, just quickly, I would encourage the property owner to reach out to our staff to verify that's, that's, is their property, and that verify that they have an opportunity to take that stump down. All right. Okay? I don't know who the property owner is, but maybe I can find out, so. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, and we'll move on to a presentation, and what, what's the presentation on?
Yes, first is a resolution supporting the 2020 census count in Clackamas County. Dylan Blaylock from Public and Government Affairs will present.
Yeah, 30 seconds. I'm just kidding.
Is that on? Good morning, Commissioners, County Administrator Schmidt, and Clerk Rathke. Great to see you today. I can go ahead and make this quick. I am Dylan Blaylock with Public and Government Affairs, and today before you is a resolution in the matter of affirming the county's dedication to an accurate 2020 census count. I'll go through this quickly. The first question, of course, is why do we do a census at all? The census has been done every year in the United States since 1790. It is mandated by the Constitution, and primarily it's for two reasons, I would say. The first is that elected officials like yourselves and our state representatives and federal representatives need good data to go ahead and base your decisions on, involving housing or whatever, as we just heard. And also, businesses use this data a lot to determine where they want to invest, to build new stores, to base industries, that sort of thing. So, another, go. Another big question is what exactly the census does affect? And so, this, in 2016, which is the latest national numbers that came out from the George Washington University, you can see the top 16 programs for Oregon, a total of $883 billion, again, as of 2016, was distributed via federal funds and grants to the 16 top programs you see, you see in front of you nationally. $13 billion of that went to Oregon, and again, these are 2016 numbers, so by 2020, with the next census count, that's going to raise to about 15 or 16 billion. You can see a lot of the services right in front of you that are, that the county has a big part in delivering to its residents. For example, SNAP, the Health Centers, Section 8 Housing, WIC, all these are dependent on accurate data numbers. So these are real programs that affect real people. And if we didn't have the accurate count and we're undercounted, then it's just simply, it's going to be bad because we don't have enough money to reach everybody. I'll also, I'll also note that there's a greater representation of Oregon's based on the upcoming census. Oregon is one of just a handful of states that is expected to go ahead and add a member of Congress because of the census numbers. I think it's one of only five or six, and that's great for, for Oregon, because then we get more, more representation, and we have more advocacy. So, what we are going to do with the kickoff today of the resolution that's before you, we are going to, I've been working with Brenda Howitt in County Administration, and for the rest of the year, we are going to conduct an awareness campaign with the goals you see in front of you. We're going to build public awareness about why the accurate count is so important, and we're going to drive people online, because this will be the first year that the census can be done completely online by individuals. We also are going to target certain traditionally undercounted communities. You can see from the data available in the previous censuses that we have taken, there are some that directly affect, or that can be found in, in our area, and it's very important that they report truthfully and straightforwardly on the census so we have accurate numbers. Those include renters, single mothers, young children, people in rural areas, and certain minorities. The plan is that we have a very robust outreach plan primarily involving social media. We'll be utilizing Commissioner Savis's time, because he is the census champion, as I stated by the Board earlier this year. And a lot of the outreach we're going to do is kind of based on where the, the data most matters. So we just talked about WIC and housing. We can do that sort of outreach and say, hey, this is why the census is important. This is, you know, if, if we don't get good numbers, we have less services here. And that's about it. The, the last slide we have is the result of the, or, sorry, the therefore part of the resolution. I will note that this is a collaborative effort with both Washington County and Multnomah County. They are going to pass their own resolutions probably within the next week. We are going now because of next week's schedule. Metro is also planning on passing a resolution as well. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and thank you for your time.
Paul, and then Ken.
Yeah, I just want to just emphasize, and maybe Dylan, you could put that first slide back up. It's important to realize that, again, to clarify, if we are undercounted, or we're not undercounting, we are underfunded in a number of these categories. That means that'd be the first slide, the one that had all the service, there we go. Those are all the opportunities we have for federal funds and grants, and again, that's, it's, I want to emphasize again, if we're underfund, if we're undercounting, we are underfunded. So this is a means of trying to level that playing field. So thank you for your presentation.
And get the dollars you pay in taxes back to the State of Oregon.
That's right.
Ken.
That same piece of paper that has all of those programs, would you give me a copy of that, please?
Yes, I can send it to you today.
Thank you.
All right. With that, any, any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the resolution supporting the 2020 census count in Clackamas County.
Second. Been moved and seconded that we approve a resolution supporting a 2020 census count in Clackamas County. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. The next item on the agenda?
Next, approval of 2019 update to the Transportation Safety Action Plan. Joe Merrick from the Department of Transportation and Development will be the presenter.
And Joe, I know you guys worked a long time on this plan. Been part of that discussion, but time is short.
Yeah. Do you have a target time?
Uh, what, probably you got two minutes. We have to leave here by, do the best you can, Joe.
Okay.
Yeah, just do the best you can.
Good morning, Chair Bernard, Commissioners. My name is Joseph Merrick, and I manage the Transportation Safety Program for the county. I'm here to talk to you today about our Safety Action Plan update, which has been a collaborative effort for the past 18 months. This is updating our 2012 plan, which had called for a reduction in fatal and serious injury crashes by 2022. We were an early adopter to the Safety Action Plans, actually being the, one of the, the first county in the state, and one of the first counties in the country to locally adopt such a plan. As we fast forward, oops, yes, as we fast forward to 2016, Oregon DOT updated their Safety Action Plan, calling for elimination of fatal and serious injury crashes by 2035. And in, oh, actually, I think I skipped a slide here, so, sorry. In 2015, the Board of County Commissioners developed their strategic priorities, which really identified safe roads, healthy people, and a vibrant economy as key elements when you summarize the, the five, five bullets. And I forgot to mention, 2014, the National Towards Zero Deaths Initiative was started to also eliminate fatal and serious injury crashes.
Joe, I think Ken wants that.
Oh, we're fine. Keep.
Oh, okay.
Till we get to the end.
Okay.
In 2017, Health, Housing, and Human Services put forward their Community Health Improvement Plan, a blueprint for a healthy Clackamas County, and within that plan, there was a goal to eliminate all pedestrian, bicycle, and motor vehicle traffic crashes in, in the county. And so what you really see is this pattern of really wanting to keep people safe and make sure nobody dies in vehicle crashes. We also started talking to our citizens about, as we started updating our plan, and as we learned talking to our citizens, when we talked about fatalities and their families, the number was zero. And when we took it to our stakeholders, the number was also very clearly zero as we started planning that. And so right from the get-go, as we started looking at our Safety Action Plan, we were zero is the answer. And so we really want to be targeting to eliminate fatal and serious injury crashes by 2035, which is consistent with the Oregon goal and consistent with national goals. And I did mention, this has been a significant effort over the, the last 18 months, so I did just want to call out quickly, a lot of our safety partners are here, and I'm actually very humbled to see all the people in the room that have been supporting this effort and have come here to support the plan. And we also had received a letter from Jesse Harris, who's on our Traffic Safety Commission, also supporting the Safety Action Plan. She wasn't able to be there, to be here today. But my staff is here, including our Traffic Engineering and Motor Care Safety and our Safety Outreach. We have a number of people from Public Health here today also supporting this effort. Metro Counselor Christine Lewis is here and will be testifying a little bit later in this presentation. And we have a number of our Traffic Safety Commission members that are here. Our Director Dan Johnson and Deputy Director Mike Bezner are also here, and they've really been providing that leadership and guidance for me as, as I've pursued this work. Our consultants, Kittleson and Associates, Malala Communities That Care, Lynn Blatter and her husband Rocky are here, also have been terrific safety partners. Clayton Simon with Lake Oswego PD, who is, who has also been terrific working with us, and Tiana Tozer from ODOT's Safety Division. And last but not least is my dear mother is here, so also supporting the adoption of this Safety Action Plan. And, and again, I'm very.
You should have led with that.
Saved the best for last.
That's right.
So as we look at traffic crashes in the county, this is a graph showing just three-year averages, and we use three-year averages because it kind of smoothes out the ups and downs of the crashes. But we had a very nice decreasing trend that ended around 2013, 2014, started going back up. The black line is our population, which is growing at a rate of about 1% per year. And we obviously want that, the blue lines, the blue bars to continue to go down and go down to zero. And so as we look at the Safety Action Plan, I think it, it really highlights where it is we need to be going when we look at those fatality numbers. Crash cause factors are very important as we look at countermeasures that we do, as well as working with people. And so we have kind of our top three here that go back and forth over the years, but it's our young drivers, ages 15 to 25, roadway departure crashes where people leave their intended lane of travel and go off the road, and then aggressive driving, those, those things of following too close, speeding, all those, all those things that we, we hope don't occur but do occur. And then amongst the, the bottom four, we have a, a variety of, of different factors. We have our vulnerable users, our motorcycle operators, pedestrians and bicycle operators. Motorcycle operators make up nearly 25% of our fatals, vastly overrepresented in our crashes. Alcohol, drugs, and really cannabis and medications really go into that category. And then our senior drivers, which is a growing segment of the population that will ultimately peak about 25%. Distracted driving isn't on here because it's very difficult to measure. Distracted driving isn't on here because it's very difficult to measure. People don't readily reveal that, oh, yes, I was using my phone when I crashed. So that's why you actually don't see that on there. We know that's a factor. Fortunately, Oregon has one of the strongest laws in the country now around distracted driving, which is terrific. When we look at prioritizing safety, we're transitioning to what's called a safe systems approach. And the safe systems approach builds upon our old plan, which we've talked about Public Health, but it becomes much more holistic. And the premise of that is that people make mistakes. We're people, we're not perfect. But these mistakes shouldn't result in death or serious injuries. Also, speed has a very direct impact on severity of crashes, and it's a simple matter of energy transfer. When that energy transfers, when you walk into the wall, to you, it hurts. If you run into the wall, you're probably going to be injured and your head's going to bleed. That's kinetic energy transfer. Safety is everybody's responsibility. It's mine, it's yours, it's all of us. But as the designers of the system, we have a special job to, you know, make sure we make things safe. And safety has to be considered at really all levels because we want that redundancy. Because if you're going to run into the wall, we probably want to cushion the wall so that you don't hurt yourself, because we don't want that kinetic energy to be at the point where exceeds the capability of your body. In the categories for the Safety Action Plan, we've looked at safe drivers, infrastructure, safe vehicles, vulnerable users, emergency medical services, safety culture, which is that people part in, safety management. We all want everybody to get home safely to their families every night. We all regularly read those tragic stories about when that didn't occur. But it takes all of us. You hear about it takes a fam-, or a village to raise a child. Well, it takes a village to get everybody home safe to their families every night. And so, you know, it begins with me, it comes from my heart of what I do. It extends to you, it extends to my family. My mom could probably tell you how many times I've talked to her about safe driving, I helped her pick a safe car, and all those little things add up. And so when we get that kind of feedback from our community, from our businesses we work with, that's when we all begin to develop this common interest, which is all going to slowly change our culture to where, yeah, we're still going to go out and have fun, but we're going to, it's like, oh, are we really being safe about how we're doing this? Or are we potentially going to harm somebody else? Because we don't want to do that. As we shift into the second part of our plan, which was new for our plan, we took a deep dive into our local road safety system, and we looked at all of our county roads, and we did what's called a network screening. So we looked at crash rates, severity, frequency, as well as traffic volumes, to really develop a ranking of those priorities for both intersections and roadway segments. In addition, we took those projects that are already identified in our capital improvement plan, projects identified in our road safety audits, where a team of engineers goes out and looks at a roadway section or segment and identifies projects. And then we have other safety projects that we've also identified. So we took all of those and tried to, you know, look at those and say, how would we, how would we prioritize those if we're going to, you know, get to zero by 2035? So we looked at predicting our revenue, looking at location-specific projects, as well as systemic safety projects, where we apply across many roads, as well as our outreach to people and groups around safety. And we're going to invest as much as we can based on the revenue that's available. And we know that goes up and down from year to year, and so some of it is a little bit hard to predict. But some of the roadway measures that are really important are things like our widened roadway shoulders and rumble strips, which you see a 50% reduction in crashes for all users, but they're fairly expensive, $100,000 a mile. We run a 1,400-mile road system, so, you know, 400, 500 miles of those are rural roads, so adds up when we're trying to fix all of those. In our urban settings, pedestrians are vulnerable users. We wanted them to get safely across the street. Pedestrian treatment, such as this rectangular rapid flash beacon up on River Road at Torbank, is a great way for pedestrians to cross safely, warns the drivers that there's a pedestrian there, so they know to stop. And we see a 56% reduction in crashes, but again, can be fairly expensive. Curve warning signs, really basic. You know, signs are about $150 apiece, so we can put signs in, and that's actually before and after photo. And, but bear in mind, we have something like 25,000 signs on our system. So, you know, when you take it in its totality and you're keeping those signs clean, it's a lot of work. Guard rail, those things to keep us on the road when going off the road wouldn't be a good option. Those are really important, but again, expensive, and have gotten more expensive because the crash protection at the guard rail ends, the technology is much better in terms of, rather than spearing the car and killing people, now you can run into a guard rail and it goes on down the road absorbing that energy, going back to that kinetic energy thing, so that not enough energy transfers to actually injure you. And so as we move forward to the plan, we respectfully request or recommend adoption of the 2019 Safety Action Plan. And then I do have several presenters that I also want to call up, so I don't know if you want to do questions now or after the presenters.
Well, Ken has a question so far. Let's do Ken's, and then we'll do the presenters.
If you're going to have the presenters, I'll wait.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's do the presenters.
So I'd like to first call up Counselor Christine Lewis and Mallory McDowell.
Counselor Lewis is a metro counselor new to the job that represents all of Clackamas County, a good portion.
Not all of Clackamas County, obviously the area within Metro's territory, but Counselor Dirkson shares a little bit of Clackamas, as does Counselor Craddock.
Excuse me, in the metro area.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair, thank you, Commissioners. Again, my name is Christine Lewis. I'm the District Two Counselor, representing the bulk of the Clackamas County area of Metro, from communities of Lake Oswego, Happy Valley, Westland, Oregon City, Milwaukee, Happy Valley, unincorporated, and there are some that I've left off there as well. But I'm here today to thank you and to thank Clackamas County for your leadership on traffic safety. When someone in our community dies from a crash or is seriously injured in a crash, it affects us all. It's somebody who's a member of our family, it's a neighbor, it's our parents, it's our children. Many traffic crashes are preventable, and many of those crashes are at all different speeds and all different modalities, and the plan in front of you today addresses that. The Drive to Zero Plan is Clackamas really sharing and showing its commitment to prevent these deaths and injuries, and I want to underscore your leadership. Clackamas was the first jurisdiction in the state with a traffic safety plan, so congratulations on the update for Drive to Zero, and you're a leader in the region as well as the state. Metro's a partner, and I want to underscore a couple of the things we're working on in order to prioritize safety from the metro perspective. Our 2018 Regional Transportation Plan, safety was one of four priorities. Metro updated our safety strategy in 2018 as well, and it lays out specific actions to reduce injuries and serious, serious injuries and deaths. And then finally, we need to prioritize safety when it comes to our grant programs. The regional flexible funds are the grant programs you're most likely aware of. So here today, really because Clackamas has been a leadership, has had a leadership role in traffic safety, and its affected policies, plans, and projects across the region, and I look forward to working with you as we move into the implementation stage of Drive to Zero.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Chairperson Bernard and County Commissioners, my name is Mallory McDowell, and I work for the Traffic Safety Program. Next month will mark my 11th year of employment here at Clackamas County. The first eight years of my employment were spent as a traffic control worker installing signs and painting lines on the road. A unique duty of maintenance that not everyone realizes is that they, as a whole, are on call around the clock. So what that meant for the department that I worked in is that when a stop sign goes down, doesn't matter if it's 2:00 AM or 2:00 PM, someone's going to go out and reset that stop sign. And when someone gets in a crash and is seriously injured, or worse, dies, someone's going to go out and close the road so that EMS and the crash reconstruction team can do their job. I had the woeful, the woeful responsibility of responding to no less than half a dozen of those road closures due to fatalities in the time I worked for that department. And to get called out in the dark of night and direct traffic for hours on end is never fun, but at the end of the day, I got to go home and go back to bed. The flashing lights and the sirens, and having to move my barricades so that a tow truck with what used to be a car strapped to the top of it could get by me. The departure of an empty ambulance and the arrival of the coroner are reminders that I was there because someone didn't get to go home, and that someone's family was having a much worse night than I was. While I recall them all in more detail than I care for, I remember one in particular where I had the absolutely heartbreaking experience of witnessing a mother and a father identify the body of their deceased teenage daughter on the side of the road. That image and their incomprehensible grief has stuck with me, and it's the experience that made me want to do more. So for the next six years, I made it my goal to become part of the transportation safety, I'm sorry, excuse me, the traffic safety team, where I could be on the front lines of making a difference and preventing these situations from happening, because no one should ever have to experience what I witnessed that night. I came to the Traffic Safety Program in 2016 with boots on the ground, practical, real-life experience, and the knowledge that, while not always obvious, while scraping moss off of a roadside, that every little thing matters. So my world of signs and stripes immediately expanded, and I realized the multifaceted approach to safety we take here. Safety isn't accomplished solely with traffic control devices. It's people, and behavior, and education, and engineering, and health, and regulations, and design. And that actually makes a lot of sense. I get to wear mini hats as a traffic engineering technician. Every day is different, but every day I'm working towards the same goal of increasing safety and eliminating fatal and serious injury crashes. The Transportation Safety Action Plan will scrutinize and prioritize my work, addressing each issue based on its impact to safety. This plan is the roadmap to my duties of safety here at work, as well as a road user and homeowner within Clackamas County. I am proud to live and serve here in Clackamas County, where health and safety are of paramount importance. Thank you again for listening to me today and helping us in our Drive to Zero, as everyone has a vital role in preventing crashes.
Hey, thank you very much.
So I'd like to have come up next Janelle Lawrence and Jim Rhodes. And Janelle was the Chair of our Drive to Zero Committee and is the Executive Director of Oregon Impact, and Jim Rhodes is a member of our Traffic Safety Commission.
Thank you for coming today.
Good morning. My name is Janelle Lawrence, and I'm Chair of the Drive to Zero Advisory Task Force. The effort to reach zero will take and has taken a collaborative effort from both inside and external to our county. The planning to develop this update to the TSAP involved input from county agencies, such as Public Health, Children and Family Community Connections, the County Sheriff, and Emergency Services. We work closely with external partners, such as my agency, Oregon Impact, Clackamas Fire, Malala Communities That Care, ODOT, OLCC, AMR, and county local partners, such as the Lake Oswego Police Department. Whether the work is directly in communities, such as ensuring occupant safety to our littlest Oregonians, fitting them in a child car seat correctly at the Clackamas Fire Station, or through engaging our youth and teens at the Clackamas County Fair every summer, we know it will take hundreds of partners in the county to stepped up to help us with our Drive to Zero. The policies and action steps in the TSAP are designed to embrace the county's core values, to provide active and responsible leadership through focused investments, innovative partnerships, and public empowerment to create healthy, safe, and sustainable communities. Thank you for your time, and I urge you to approve this plan.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Bernard and fellow Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Jim Ruff. I'm the Chair of the Clackamas County Traffic Safety Commission, and I'm providing testimony in support of approval of the Traffic, Transportation and Safety Action Plan. I want to emphasize two points. The first is to reinforce how important it is to have citizens engaged in traffic safety. The TSAP makes the case throughout that it will take many different agencies, institutions, neighbors, and the citizens to realize the near impossible goal of Drive to Zero. Only through collaboration can we be successful. As Chair of the TSC, we look at our role as to engage citizens in this process and to serve as an important sounding board for the county on policies and plans such as the TSAP. We took our job seriously and provided feedback throughout the drafting of the plan. I'm a retired U.S. Navy Commander with years of naval aviation experience. Naval aviation has a strong safety culture, as that third dimension of travel through the sky can be deadly when your plane stops working completely, or correctly. You can't just pull over to the side of the road. Aircraft maintenance and operations have numerous safety steps in hopes of avoiding errors and keeping our men and women alive and well, and our invaluable aircraft assets functional. Many of these safety steps were written in blood as serious injuries or deaths were sustained. How do we stop additional injuries and death? Each squadron had a safety department, supported by full-time staff. Regular training and discussions were part of every flight operation. How do we get our citizens to see the benefit of a safety culture? The vast majority of drivers now wear seat belts as a result of a safety focus and cultural change of training our children that the car does not move until the seat belts are on. I remember there were no seat belts when I was a child. Cars didn't have them. And then they got them, and it was just a safety belt, not a shoulder. So I have a scar right here where I had a car accident, my chin hit the steering wheel. So if I'd had the safety harness, I wouldn't have hit that. So it keeps improving. My grandchildren will not allow you to move if their seat belt is not attached. Similarly, we need to change the culture to recognize that distracted driving in its many forms is not a safe act for our cars, passengers, or the rest of the driving public. It will be a long effort, with many repeated attempts, to highlight the negative results of distracted driving and the other safe driving issues. We need to message consistently and often in as many ways as possible. Reducing the road deaths to zero requires nothing less. I thank you again for the opportunity to testify and the focus on safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I have just two more people. I'd like to call up Julie Albers with Public Health, and Clint Coleman with the Canby Traffic Safety Commission.
Thank you for coming today.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners, Chair Bernard. My name is Julie Albers. I'm the Deputy Director of Public Health here in Clackamas County. I'm also a commuter and drive 20 miles each direction to get to this job, so I appreciate the safe roads. Thank you for this opportunity to support the Department of Transportation Safety Plan. According to the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation's County Health Rankings, Clackamas County has now moved to fourth healthiest county in the state. I think I recently told you we were third, so that's recently updated. The county is falling short in areas related to the transportation system. So driving alone to work is a primary reason for our health ranking to not be higher. Forty-five percent of the workers who commute alone spend 30 minutes or more driving to work, a behavior that is linked to higher rates of hypertension and obesity. Also, between 2013 and 2017, 37% of the driving deaths in Clackamas County involved alcohol, a preventable mortality that has wide-reaching social and economic impact. The Transportation Safety Action Plan will help eliminate unintentional injuries and improve community health by convening partners to implement strategies and build healthy environments for people to work, play, and be active. We've had a partnership since 2010 with the Department of Transportation and Development to apply a health and safety lens to transportation projects through our health impact assessment work and collaborative strategic planning. We've developed a position that we share to do health impact assessments on transportation and other projects. The 2017 and 2000 to 2020 Blueprint for Healthy Clackamas has three priorities. The 2017 and 2000 to 2020 Blueprint for Healthy Clackamas has three priorities: access to care, culture of health, and healthy behaviors. The Transportation Safety Action Plan dovetails nicely with the blueprint and outlines a way forward in all three of these areas. For example, the local road safety plan will help create a safe, interconnected communities that support access to health and wellness services. The positive culture framework applied to the, the, uh, applied to building a safety culture, promote cross-sector relationships. Uh, it identifies shared values and decision-making approaches to improve population health and safety. And finally, the Safety Action Plan focuses on addressing our social, cultural, and physical environments to encourage people to make safer travel decisions within Clackamas County, whether they're walking, biking, or taking public transit. So thank you for your support of the Transportation Safety Action Plan. The Public Health Division is excited to embark on this partnership of collaboration to create a healthier, safer Clackamas County and drive safely to Salem today.
Thank you.
Chairman Bernard and Commissioners, thank you very much and we very much endorse your Drive to Safety on the Clack- or Canby, Oregon, uh, Traffic Safety Commissioner. And the way I got started in that was from 2012 to 2016, I served as a Canby City Counselor and I was a liaison to traffic safety. And after my time as, uh, of Canby City Counselor, I joined the Traffic Safety Committee and we have, uh, very robust monthly meetings. We meet on the second Friday of each month from 8:30 to 10, 10 a.m. And we've reached out in a very favorable way to our police and fire, Public Works, and our Planning Commission, um, and we work together. We have great representation from all our groups and because one of the challenges we face in Canby, of course, is a rapidly growing community and so we've had to be very creative with, uh, stretching our tax dollars. Uh, but we've worked with the schools on safe routes to schools, raised crosswalks, uh, four-way stops when needed. Uh, one of the challenges we had was speeding on a specific road and we, uh, traveled to Tigard and Beaverton and looked at some of the solutions that they had implemented and determined that speed humps were a good solution and that has worked very well. Uh, we've worked with ODOT on the reduction of speed on one of our thoroughfares, uh, improved signage, uh, digital speed signs, flashing speed signs. And one of the other things I have to commend you on is, uh, the Clackamas County Tra- Traffic Safety, uh, Rob Sadowski's come out to our group and he spoke and given a presentation and I just really appreciate the support that we're getting from the county and, uh, our group is very excited to do our part to try to help you drive to zero.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Anything additional to add?
Uh, no, I don't have anything additional. I can answer questions.
Okay, Ken?
Um, just wanted to say to the young lady who's worked on safety that, um, having worked on a volunteer fire department, I've seen a lot of what you've seen. I understand exactly what, what you've gone through. But on a different note, uh, somebody who's actually survived three high-speed motorcycle crashes, it's folks like you that were there for me when accounted and it's a, very much appreciated. Uh, and, uh, other than that, I'll, I'll put aside my 53 extra questions in the interest of time and I'm prepared to make a motion when you are, so.
Okay, Martha?
Yeah, I just want to thank Joe Merritt for all the work he's done through the years. You've been doing a fantastic job, so thank you and thank you for bringing all the folks here today. You've quietly worked on this and you've actually, all of you know that how the lives that you've saved because of the work you've done. Thank you, Joe.
Paul?
Yeah, well, I've, take this kind of personal, um, because of some, lost my mom and my dad and my brother. But, um, when I first moved to Clackamas County, um, I was working nights getting my business going and on, um, those summer nights, three people were ran over and killed on McLaughlin Boulevard in the series that summer. So it always, uh, strikes home and of course it didn't stop there, you know? Over the years, there've been a number of fatalities, um, and it's not just the fatalities, folks that, that lose their lives, also the people that are permanently disabled or the families that lost loved ones. So it, it has deep impacts to all, and I'm sure all of us have personal experiences and knowledges about that, but... Really appreciate all the advocacy and the good work. And, um, the flashing sign on a river road that you had on the picture. Last night I was walking back from a meeting and, um, awesome device, really awesome device, helping a senior citizen cross the road and realize that both of us were not dressed in dark clothing or we were d- dressed in dark clothing. We're not dressed in something that, that, uh, people could see or motors could see. And absent those signs, you know, I always kind of worry about senior citizens and, and all of us, young kids. It was just the other day, uh, my wife, uh, had noticed that some, uh, this one lady was walking her dog every morning in the wee hours when it was dark. And my wife gave her a safety vest, uh, just a few days ago to wear, um, because she was concerned that if not her, someone else might, might strike her. Um, so, um, we forget that. I think we forget that, what we wear and people don't always use crosswalks. It's very frustrating to see boulevards where people just, instead of using a, a crosswalk that's lit, they just cross the road where it's convenient and they don't, they don't recall or they don't realize that the, they cannot be seen at night when it's dark. So I, again, I appreciate the advocacy and all the good work you do and congratulations. I know that the county has been a leader in this, uh, far more than just Oregon, but nationally, and I appreciate the good work.
Thank you.
And for your mother, uh, you're an absolute expert. You do a fantastic job.
Thanks.
And, uh, and I, I think the report also says a lot in that 93% of the accidents are caused by human error. We do a lot to try and save lives, but the fact is, um, we need to be more careful when we drive and pay attention, not look at text messages. And many of your programs that you're doing in schools, uh, I remember AMR used to do a, um, I think it was a, um, prom night or graduation night event, uh, really does, uh, make people more aware and saves lives. And I've known a number of teenagers who, who, uh, died in car accidents and it's a terrible waste. So thank you. With that, uh, let's see, do we ask the questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the 2019 update to the Transportation Safety Action Plan.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve the 2019 update to the Transportation Safety Plan. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your good work.
Thank you very much for your support.
Okay, so the next item is the Consent Agenda and I'd ask the clerk to read the Consent Agenda by title.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of a facility lease agreement with the North Clackamas School District Number 12 at Wichita Community Services Building for the Women Infant and Children Program. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Washington County for accessing Clackamas County Emergency Medical Services electronic protocols. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Portland State University Toll on School of Urban Studies and Planning and the Regional Research Institute for Human Services. Approval of an intergovernmental subrecipient agreement, Amendment Number Five with North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, Milwaukee Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents age 60 and over. Approval of a grant renewal, Amendment Number Two from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Housing Our Families for the Purpose of Providing Rapid Re-Housing Program. Approval of Grant Renewal Number Two, Amendment Number Two, from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Supportive Housing Programs for the Housing Our Heroes Project for the Purpose of Providing Permanent Supportive Housing to Veterans. Approval of Grant Renewal, Amendment Number Two with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Supportive Housing Program for the Rent Well Rapid Re-Housing Program. Approval of Grant Renewal, Amendment Number Two, from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Continuum of Care Program for the Hope Leasing Program for the Purpose of Providing Permanent Supportive Housing. Approval of Grant Renewal, Amendment Number Two with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Continuum of Care Program for the Hope Two Program for Purpose of Providing Permanent Supportive Housing. Approval of Grant Renewal, Amendment Number Two with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Coordinated Housing Access System. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Estacada to Transfer Permitting Authority, Maintenance Responsibility, and Road Standards for a Portion of Darrow Road. Approval of a Local Agency Agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for the Canby Markham Highway Bear Creek Bridge Project. A Board Order Acknowledging a Pla- Right-of-Way and Simultaneously Vacating a Portion of Mountain Road. Approval of Supplemental Project Agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for the Clackamas County Regional Freight Intelligent Transportation System Project. Approval of Amendment Number Two to the Local Agency Agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for the Clackamas County Regional Freight Intelligent Transportation System Project. Approval of a Resolution to Sell Property Located at 92 Abernathy Road in the Manor Provided by ORS 271. Approval of a Disposition Agreement between Clackamas County and the Blue at Abernathy Creek pertaining to property located at 902 Abernathy Road. Approval of a Disposition Agreement between Clackamas County and Beaver Creek Structures pertaining to property located at 19314 South Beaver Creek Road. Authorization to Purchase Plastic Pavement Markings from Givetco Marking for the Department of Transportation and Development. Approval of a Contract with Granite Construction Company for Bull Run River Southeast Bull One Bull Run Road Bridge Approach. Under the Finance Department, Authorization to Contract for Elevator Services from Cone Inc. for the Facility's Maintenance Division. Under Elected Officials, Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes and a Resolution Appointing Justices of the Peace Pro Temp- Temporary for the Clackamas County Justice of the Peace District Justice Court. Under Community Corrections, Approval to Apply for a Grant Award with National Institute of Justice to Conduct Research and Evaluation on Re-Entry Initiative. Under Business and Community Services, Approval of Amendments to the Clackamas Workforce Partnership Bylaws. Under the Juvenile Department, Approval of Personal Services Contract, Amendment Number 11 with Parrot Creek Child and Family Services to Provide Shelter Services for Youth. Approval of a Personal Service Contract, Amendment Number 11 with Boys and Girls Aid Society of Oregon to Provide Shelter Services for Youth. Approval of a Personal Services Contract, Amendment Number 11 with Christian Community Placement Center to Provide Shelter Services for Youth. Under Technology Services, Approval of a Service Level Agreement with the Multnomah County, Multnomah Education Service District for the Lease of Dark Fiber. Under County Council, Approval of a Withdrawal of Territory from Clackamas County Service District Number One. Under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, Approval of Amendment Number One to the Grant Agreement between Metro and North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District for the Boardman Wetland Complex Project. Under the Development Agency, Approval of the Third Amendment to the Disposition Agreement with Bottling Group, LLC. And Underwater Environment Services, Approval of Amendment Number Two to the Agreement between Water Environment Services and Tribeca Transport for On-Call Services for the Management of Class B Bio-Solids and Raw, Raw Sludge. That concludes today's consent agenda, yay! Woo, congratulations! That was a long one.
Do any, uh, Commissioners want to remove or pull an item from the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Uh, let me see, abstain? Hearing none? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to all the folks on the consent agenda. With that, uh, county administrator updates.
In the interest of time, I just have one update for you Commissioners and I've already briefed you on this, that I approved and signed a contract on your behalf in accordance with Clackamas County Code Appendix C104. This was necessary due to the cancellation of your March 21st business meeting. It was for Technology Services, Approval of a Service Level Agreement between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and the Canby School District for Dark Fiber Connection. So for purposes of the minutes, I'm formally sharing with you I made this decision in your absence.
All right, thank you. Uh, County Commissioner Communications, let's try to keep it short. Uh, we have Martha up first.
Yeah, I know, I am going to try and keep it short, so I'm cutting this like way down. So not to worry, but I just wanted to show you, I have a lot going on, everybody. I'm pageful. Uh, just quickly, I want to congratulate the city of West Lynn. They are officially a bee city and particularly a bee city. There's a lot of buzz about bees lately.
I'm glad to be in bees.
Yeah, there you go. It's a bee, no, honeybees, native pollinators. You know, Jim, come on. Uh, I also want to call out Carol Yamada and Rich Cook of the Stafford Hamlet because we've been talking, uh, about, uh, actually what it might take to become a bee county, so more to come on that and that's something I'd like to discuss with the rest of the board. Um, I've been talking to Rick and Evan, our sustainability, Rick Rune from our, uh, forestry group and our sustainability, uh, Evan Pope, to see what we can pull together with a lot of stakeholders, but there's more detail on that later. Um, actually, the other thing I wanted to mention really quickly is that Ken and I did attend the Mass Timber Conference. Here we go, here's this. And Ken, um, I'm sure Ken will talk about, but he did a great job, uh, really passing out and networking there to make sure that our initiative on cross-laminated timber, you were, you were like the master of networking out here with everybody. It was really fun to, fun to see. I, on the other hand, took a little bit of a quieter track and, um, a number of things I attended was overcoming, one of the tracks was overcoming barriers and growing the mass timber market. So, uh, you know, I, I went to things like changing cities into forests, um, creating environmentally friendly and timber utilizing cities. Uh, Forest State Timber University, what does it mean to be a school of architecture and design in a state 60% covered by forests? That would be us. And then the Oregon Model, encouraging growing the mass timber supply chain, which as I said, we've been working on for a while and Commissioner Humberston will talk more about that. Um, I went to a track about overcoming barriers, uh, to this, this particular growing, uh, market. But more importantly, I attended a track in reimagining our cities and it had to do with urban growth, code changes, taller mass timber buildings, a catalyst for driving climate solutions in the building industry. So we talked about the story of sustainability, climate, and mass timber. Mass timber is a natural climate solution and how do we normalize mass timber construction? By looking at what the barriers might be to that. So it was really a fantastic conference and when I have more time, uh, and we have more time, I'll go into more detail with a lot of other things that are going on. So let me move to our Word of the Week and our Arts and Culture Activities in the county. Savoie Fair, an evident sense of confidence and proficiency. Did you know savoie fra- fair is a French phrase meaning how to do it? Staff was lucky to find a librarian who brought a savoie fair to the library's information system that no one else possessed. Okay, arts and culture in the county. The Arts Council of Lake Oswego prevents evening lecture. Where are you from? Exploring what makes us Oregonians Tuesday, April 2nd, 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. on Lake Street in Lake Oswego. And Karani Mitchell will lead a conversation that asks what makes us Oregonians and how we can en- create inclusive communities. Uh, Mount Hood Museum presents Social Happy Hour Ski Fashion Show from Vintage to 2020. That sounds like a lot of fun. Saturday, March 23rd, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m., Mount Hood Museum Government Camp. And models from the Skanti Ski Club will share ski fashion from the museum's vintage collection and next year's hot trends supplied by Hillcrest Ski Shop. I know I always liked the, uh, fashions from the 1940s from the mountain, if you look at some of those. So, uh, in any case, any more information about arts, clackamasartsalliance.org. And colleagues, I am going to apologize, I, I have to be in Salem too, I know you do. I did want to have a few minutes with, um, Councilor Lewis about impact issues, so if you don't mind, I'm just going to go off and have a chat with her, but, um, thank you and I don't mean to be rude.
Oh, not a problem.
Okay, but I'll, I'll check up to make sure I know what everybody is.
At the Mass Timber Conference, I, I just want to mention, that's why I have so much trouble with Ken's name, it's Ken Mass Timber CLT Humberston.
He has assumed...
He's got Humberston.
Humberston.
You're doing good.
You got it. He has assumed the mantle.
Dark fiber, choose one.
Yeah, dark fiber.
Yeah, there you go. Well, we certainly have a lot to chat about and about very little time, so I'm just going to be short and really talk about my concerns about HB 2001. HB 2001 would basically eliminate some of the intentional design of density in residential districts, areas, and it just seems a case in point and a very topic of many community meetings I've attended this week, as well as tour yesterday with the Economic Development Commission along the McLaughlin Boulevard area. And what's come to light is, for some folks, is the realization that the cost of some of the current residential homes, the rents especially, or the apartments that are currently there are, granted, they've gone up, and granted, they're out of reach or people are on the edge, but the concern is that we would take the sanctity of basically property ownership, homeownership in those areas, and flip that into something that would be more commercial, more profit-oriented, and in doing so, would take some of those rental homes, for example, that are maybe today 800 or 900 or $1,000 or more, and rebuild those. And the cost of rebuilding those to put more homes on them with well-intentioned, you know, increase, increase supply, that the mathematical, the mathematics demonstrate that the cost, when it's completed, if with no profit alone, would be higher than what it is today. I think that is something that we need to be really sensitive about and be very concerned about. A broad policy change that HB 2001 would implement might have some good results in some areas and some very negative unfortunate results in other areas. So I personally, as drafted, I'm inclined to, number one, oppose this and have this as a topic for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss and ideally take a position on, but I think in areas it might be well prescribed, but I think overall, again, it takes the sanctity of what homeownership and neighborhoods are all about in terms of in the really commercial profit centers, and incentivizes really outcomes that maybe aren't intended, but outcomes that would actually increase the cost of housing.
That actually takes control away from the counties.
Takes control away from the counties and the cities. It's not, it's not a good outcome.
Commissioner Humbertson. I did it right or wrong?
No.
Humbertson.
There you go, got the.
Humbertson.
He's stunning. Humbertson.
Yes.
Yes.
This is going to go on for a long time, isn't it?
Yes.
Well, as Commissioner Schrader pointed out, the big event for me this past week has been the Timber Conference. I did spend the time networking with the businesses there. Two in particular, I spent a great deal of time with, both of whom have shown a very much interest in locating their businesses in Clackamas County. One is a secondary processor and the other is a primary processor. Staff are actually working on some of the pro formas and other aspects of their business needs. We are certainly hoping that they will locate here. These are family wage jobs, and when we talk about housing initiatives and what it takes to get people into housing, the biggest thing it'll take is decent family wage jobs. So I'm very happy that we've got some real nibbles from a couple of major businesses, and hopefully they will bear fruit. Related to that was a conference I had with Dr. Plotkin out at Clackamas Community College, who is strongly interested in developing the curriculum for training the young people that would be working in these jobs, especially on the CNC and CAD machines. So those are high-tech jobs that pay really good wages, and the college is very interested in working with the industry to make that happen. And the last one was with some of our metal workers, or metal, the metallurgy aspect of cross-laminated timber construction. There's a lot more metal in it than people might realize, and there are parts that could easily be made here in Clackamas County with some of our 50 different metals manufacturing companies, so I'm hoping that we can make a connection between some of the international producers and our, and our local metallurgic companies and possibly get some subcontract work for those folks, and I will leave it at that. Thank you, and there is no dog today.
No, no, no.
Good.
Oh, that's good.
Oh, that's nice.
Commissioner Fisher.
As Vice Chair of Clackamas County, after these meetings, Chair Bernard and I go into a meeting where we strategize the agenda. And given that Chair Bernard is testifying in Salem this afternoon, and we have to strategize our agenda, I am going to defer my comments to next week.
And I'm going to be really quick. I want to just mention that, you know, on the agenda today, we're providing dark fiber to Canby School, saves the school districts tons of money, and we're looking to, you know, spend those dollars in the, in the schools rather than for paying for internet service. I want to thank Jill Smith, and the discussion we had was very good, obviously very knowledgeable. Also want to thank Joe Merrick. Joe Merrick, you know, we've had somebody up here a number of times questioning the decisions by our engineering department on what works best to save lives, you know, and Joe is an expert who's been doing this for many years. I don't question for a second what he thinks would save lives, and I'm sticking with that. So I want to again thank everybody for coming today, it was a great meeting, and have a good weekend. Thank you.